Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight at the Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioners Cemetery Commissioners Meeting of September 25th. Call to order, I need to say this meeting is being recorded. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, Selectman Johnson will be joining us remotely. Out of an abundance of caution, I think we should have a motion, roll call, vote to allow him to participate remotely. Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept Selectman Johnson being remote tonight.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
John Marcy, aye.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
Mark Landry, aye.
Kerry Sigenovich, aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson. Next on the agenda, acceptance of minutes, August 21st, 2023 and September 11th, 2023. Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept minutes of August 21st, 2023 and September 11th, 2023 as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Next on the agenda, Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I've asked Sean Healy, our LSP from Weston and Sampson, to come in and give a public report and a status report, which coincides with a recent update on our IRA status about the cap landfill mitigation and the efforts in and around Eagle Drive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Good to see you again, Sean.
Good to see you, Sean. Good to see you. All right. So, yeah, John wanted me to come in and just give an update as to where we are with the sampling that we've been conducting as part of the part of the Dudley sanitary landfill, the PFAS and 1-4 dioxide impacts that have been identified at the landfill. This is a regulated site under the Massachusetts contingency plan under SDP RTN 2-21744. And my name is Sean Healy. I'm a licensed site professional with Weston and Sampson. Thank you very much. And I've been working on this project since November 2021. So, just wanted to quickly go through the regulatory status of the site, review the sampling that's been performed to date, and just talk about next steps. So, just to go through how we got here, an overview of the regulatory status, in 2021, we had detections of PFAS and 1-4 dioxide in groundwater and surface water samples, which were obtained during perimeter landfill monitoring around the Dudley sanitary landfill. In October 2021, we reported those concentrations to the Mass DEP, and a release tracking number was issued, and we obtained approval for what's called an immediate response action plan or an IRA. That IRA plan was to sample the residential homes located adjacent about 600 feet away, adjacent to the landfill in a cross gradient location. These homes are located along Eagle Drive and Fairview Drive. Our original sampling was at Eagle Drive. So, our IRA plan included sampling those residential homes, providing bottled water to the residents if we get any detections of PFAS or 1-4 dioxide, and installing point-of-entry treatment systems at each house where there was an exceedance of drinking water standards for PFAS or 1-4 dioxide. So, we sample homes seasonally. Each time we get a detection during one seasonal event, what we need to do is expand the radius another 500 feet to sample further out into the neighborhood. So, we've been doing that consistently throughout the season since November 2021. Along the way, we originally submitted an IRA plan to explain, you know, this process to DEP. In December 2021, we submitted that, and then along the way, we've submitted IRA status reports. Every first one was 120 days after the IRA plan submittal, and then every six months, we submit another IRA status report. Those status reports detail the seasonal sampling, the results that we get, the additional homes that we need to sample going forward. They also provide information relative to the treatment systems that we have on the houses that I'll talk about in a little bit. And then we also have remedial monitoring status reports, submittals that are now required. Recently, DEP added those on to our reporting requirements, and those are remedial monitoring reports relative to the treatment systems that are on each home. Our next step, as we continue to do sampling and reporting to the DEP, our next step are to move into what's called Phase Two Assessment under the MCP, where we will be doing some additional groundwater monitoring while installation around the landfill to get a better understanding of the hydrogeology. This is a bedrock aquifer that's impacted residential homes or have bedrock wells. So, we need to get a better understanding of the bedrock conditions and the groundwater conditions downgrading of the landfill, both upgrading of the landfill, downgrading, cross gradient, and get some additional surface water data as part of that Phase Two Assessment. That Phase Two Assessment is really going to give us a lot more information as to what the sources are throughout. You know, there's multiple sources that we're aware of. Currently, we have the Gentex Optics facility, which is to the north of the landfill. We also have a big surface water bedrock connection where we feel that there could be some surface water impacts that are migrating into the area from some, perhaps some additional sources. So, there's a lot of sources that need to be evaluated as part of that Phase Two Assessment. So, so far, sampling performed to date, we, in November 2021, we initiated the sampling of five homes. We started with five homes on Eagle Drive, and then we continued with our sampling, seasonal sampling program into 2022, seasonal sampling throughout 2022, and then in the spring or summer of 2023. To date, we've sampled 52 homes at least once within Eagle Drive and Fairview Drive. We have point-of-entry treatment systems that are installed on 13 of those homes because they've identified either PFAS above the drinking water standards in their wells, or it was PFAS and 1-4 dioxide. There are four houses where we have PFAS and 1-4 dioxide above standards. Our next sampling event is currently underway. That's the fall seasonal sampling event. So, our next steps are to continue with seasonal sampling. Some sampling reduction is expected to occur. We, as we've been sampling for a long time, since 2021, and then we have a year's worth of seasonal sampling for some of these houses, we've been able to establish the trends, and we've submitted a modification to the DEP, which they are going to allow us to actually reduce the sampling interview interval for some of these homes. So, as we're going to continue with the sampling, we're going to perform, as I said, Phase Two Assessment in the area of downgrading of the landfill to establish the nature and extent of impacts in our source areas. That Phase Two Assessment, we're planning to do in the fall of 2023 and the spring of 2024, so that we can submit our report to DEP a year from now when it's due, the Phase Two Assessment Report. And ultimately, the solution to get closure on the impacts to the residential neighborhood will be the connection of residents to the public water supply system. That is just a quick summary of where we're at, but I want to, I provided some concentration maps, and so I want to pull those up. So, this first map here is a map that depicts the highest concentrations of PFAS that have been detected throughout the entire sampling events that we've done ever since November 2021.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask Sean to just point out where the landfill is?
Yes, yes.
And where Gentex is as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is not, this is not the correct map. This is our July sampling event. So, I could just talk to you a little bit about the July sampling. So, the landfill is down here. You can see it down here. We have the Dudley sanitary landfill down here to the bottom left-hand page, corner of the page, and then up to the north here is Gentex Optics. You could see that from what we know from the groundwater flow direction through the couple of years of monitoring now at Dudley landfill, that the flow direction is to the southeast and not towards these residential neighborhoods. This map here depicts the most recent sampling event that was performed in July of this year, this summer. The red squares are on each house where we identify PFAS above the drinking water standard. And you can see that it's really clustered and focused to the east and to the northeast of the Gentex facility. In this, in this sampling event in July, we did not identify any PFAS above regulatory standards to the east of the sanitary landfill. This is fairly, it's very consistent with what we've seen historically as part of the highest PFAS concentrations. We're seeing a lot more to the, to the east and northeast of Gentex. The only residential property that we have seen, this is just one, and that is 74 Eagle Drive, which is just east of the landfill where we've identified PFAS during one sample, two sampling so far. And they were both in the summer, one is the summer of 2021 and That is the July sampling event. I'm going to go down to the next slide, figure. The figure that I have up on the screen is for the 1-4 dioxide. So, we also monitor for 1-4 dioxide. This is from the July sampling event. So, the 1-4 dioxide is a contaminative concern that was identified at the landfill, in the landfill only to date. It's not a contaminative concern. At the Gentex facility, they have not sampled for it. It hasn't been identified as a contaminative concern. We have 1-4 dioxide in the perimeter wells at the landfill and in the surface water, which is why it's a contaminative concern for, for our RTN at the landfill. And you can see it's a bit sporadic. This is the July sampling events. For 1-4 dioxide, we have the 72 Eagle Drive where we have a detection above standards. We have 63 in red above standards, and then 56. The green is non-detect for 1-4 dioxide, and the yellow is concentrations that were detected but below standards. So, it's very sporadic, imminent-wise, as far as 1-4 dioxide. All right. So, this is the slide, which I believe I've handed. You guys all have hard copies of these. So, this is figure three. 3A. So, 3A is the one on the screen here, and you guys should have a copy of this. This is the highest PFAS concentrations detected to date since November 2021, when we first started the sampling. And you can see, as I was indicating previously, we have all the red concentrations that are to the east and to the northeast of Gentex. We have that one detection at 72 Eagle. That's our house where we have the, that's where we've had PFAS and 1-4 dioxide the last two summers at that house. But you can see that there's a lot of yellow on the map, and those are, those are indicate concentrations where PFAS is below standards, but it is detected. And then green is non-detect. So, you can see that as we move from Eagle Drive towards Fairview Drive, we have a row of non-detects. So, we've determined the limit of impacts in that direction. So, we don't have to sample any further to the east of Fairview Drive. There's also a public water supply system that you can see on the map in the blue. Those, that's a public water supply line on Eagle Drive and Joseph Drive. So, we don't have, obviously, don't have to continue sampling in that direction. We have yellow to the northeast at the intersection of Eagle Drive and Fairview Drive. So, we have some detections up there, and therefore, we have to expand our radius for sampling in, in this month to 47, 45, and 43 Fairview Drive. So, those are new houses that will be sampled this, during this month. And then we can go to the last figure I have on this, which is the second figure that you guys have in your hand. Figure 3B. And this one is the highest concentrations of 1-4 dioxide detected. Again, we're seeing sporadic. We have the one at 72 Eagle Drive, which is to the east of the landfill. And then we have 63 Eagle Drive, which is the east of Gentex, and then a couple more houses that are above standards to the northeast of Gentex. And then a lot of yellows, I mean, a lot of greens, which are non-detect, and a few scattered yellows, which are detections but below standards. So, that's where we, that's where we stand as far as sampling goes. Like I indicated, we're moving on now to Phase Two Assessment, where we're going to be doing some, installing some bedrock wells in and around the landfill and between the landfill and the residential neighborhoods. That's the plan, so that we can further identify, you know, the source and the nature and extent of impacts, and also doing some surface water sampling upstream and downstream, so that we can get a better idea as to, you know, what the sources are and where the impacts are coming from, and what the dynamics are between the surface water and the bedrock aquifer. So, with that, that is it for the update. So, as far as the Poet Systems go, we have Poet Systems on 13 houses, and they are, all these houses that are shown here on the highest PFAS concentration map in red. Those Poet Systems are being monitored. They've been monitored on a monthly basis, and we have influence samples. So, we have, it's a, it's a, the Poet System is a dual carbon system that's in the basement. We get an influence sample of the raw water that comes into the carbon system before the first canister, and then we get a mid-fluent sample between the two canisters, and then an effluent sample. So, monthly monitoring has been performed at each of the houses, influence, mid-fluent, effluent samples. When we get breakthrough of the first canister and get a detection above, of approaching standards, we would switch it out, switch out the canisters to make sure we don't get breakthrough through that third canister. To date, I think the first Poet System was installed at 63 Eagle Drive just over a year ago, and we have not had any PFAS breakthrough. We've had no canister changeouts for, for PFAS at 63 Eagle Drive. The other houses, we had, the systems were installed in February and March of this year, and those, again, no PFAS breakthrough. We've had two houses where we've had 1-4 dioxide breakthrough. 63 Eagle, every couple of months, we have 1-4 dioxide breakthrough through the first canister in the mid-fluent sample, so we have to switch that out. And then there's a second house, I believe it's 56 Eagle. I'd have to check my notes, but we've had breakthrough for 1-4 dioxide there as well. So, the Poet Systems are working effectively. You know, they're doing what we need them to do. We've had non-detections in the effluent samples. They're treating down to drinking water standards. The other thing that's going on is bottled water delivery. We have bottled water delivery that's being delivered to any house that has had a detection that doesn't have a Poet System on it. So, any detection at all, 1-4 dioxide or PFAS, is getting bottled water. And that's, that's my update. That is the update on the sampling and the Poet Systems. So, I'm open to any questions you guys might have.
Thank you, Sean. Any, Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sean, thank you for the presentation. As always, detailed and a lot of information to digest. So, I'm looking at the PFAS concentration key map, that one you sent us?
Yes.
You briefly touched on it, and just to the uneducated eye, because I'm not an engineer, and I'm not asking you to draw direct conclusion. I know Gentex is also in compliance with the state, right, on the, on the release they had?
They are in compliance, and they've been cooperating and helping, assisting with dual responsibility for the sampling and the, and the Poet Systems.
Yeah. So, this map doesn't show elevation, and I understand groundwater doesn't necessarily follow contour of land. But based on the map you provided and the color key, you kind of touched on it, a lot of those higher concentrations are not in the vicinity of the landfill. They're more north, is that northeast of the landfill?
Yes.
Make it more northeast from Gentex.
Yes, east and northeast. That's correct. Yes.
And to the, to the naked eye, Gentex is higher than Fairview. Again, I know water doesn't follow, underground water doesn't follow contour.
Yeah, yeah.
But it appears, obviously by your data, it's more that way than as opposed to leaking from the landfill. Not saying we don't have an issue, but...
That, that is what the colors show us, right? Like, if we look at these map and we see these colors, Gentex did, has done some work at their property, and they do have a flow direction that's heading right to the residents that are, that are in red, right to the east, northeast. But we also have, so Gentex definitely, you know, we got to keep an eye on that as a, as a source. That's why they're doing some of the, they're cooperating fully and assisting with the sampling. And we also have this, if you look at the map here, we have the Potash Brook, which feeds into the surface water, the well and area to the north.
Right.
And there's been detections in that brook. There's been some detections that have been detected up gradient, in that brook, up gradient from the Gentex property as well.
So is that...
So, that kind of feeds into the surface water body, which also, which then drains to the south from the, from the information that I have seen and towards the landfill. So, there's a lot going on, you know, that's all surface water, the Potash Brook, the surface water connection to the bedrock aquifer. That's still, that's all got to be evaluated.
So, is that burden on the, all, that burden's on the town to do that testing? Is that being shared by Gentex or the state?
Right. So, so Gentex has their own RTN, and they're responsible for doing that type of an evaluation in and around their property to figure out what's going on hydrogeologically on their property in connection to all these, all these impacts. And we do, the town does as well on the, on their landfill. So, we have to, we have to do our own assessment around the landfill to understand those dynamics.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
We, there's no, I don't see anything on the map except for the houses showing. You just said something about surface water. What's our obligation on surface water? You said 500 feet on a positive test, right, if it's someone's...
Um, no, yeah. So, our, our IRA plan pertains just to the potable wells.
Okay.
Yep. Surface water is not part of the IRA plan. But we do have to evaluate the surface water, the nature and extent of surface water as part of our Phase Two Assessment as we move forward over the next year.
Going to be next.
Yeah. So, yeah, there'll be some sampling done both upstream and downstream.
Is that borne entirely by the town, or is that...
I believe Gentex is planning on doing surface water sampling as well as part of their work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If, if I may, when you spoke earlier, you said the groundwater is traveling southeast?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we have, you know, we're also doing landfill monitoring at the Dudley landfill. And we... And we have, it's been an ongoing seasonal sampling event that's gone on there as well. And as part of that, we gauge the existing monitoring wells that are around the landfill. And we always update the groundwater flow map, and it's consistently been, you could see that blue arrow on that figure, to the southeast. Um, that said, we do, our wells are very shallow there. Those wells were put in as part of the landfill closure years ago, and I think the deepest well is twenty-eight feet, where we, some of these residential wells are four-hundred-and-fifty feet deep in the rock. So that's, there's a lot of evaluation that, that we, we got to confirm that groundwater flow direction in the bedrock.
And if I could ask one more question. I, I know, I know I'm probably not the only person looking at this map and saying, there's, there's some yellows in between some reds, there's some sporadic, but what would cause that?
So it could be, it could be a few things. Um, these wells, uh, you know, the, the well depths vary, uh, in the neighborhoods, you know, anywhere between a hundred and fifty feet deep in the bedrock to four-hundred-and-fifty feet deep, somewhere five-hundred feet deep. Bedrock fractures are very variable, and that's why, you know, sometimes you have to drill five-hundred feet to get a, a water-bearing fracture, whereas you might find something at a hundred and fifty feet. At the same time, you could have a bedrock well right next door to your well and you might be tapping into a different fracture. So that, you could have a, both have four-hundred, four-hundred-and-fifty feet wells, same depth, but you may not have hit that fracture in the well, in the house next door. So that fracture could be carrying some PFAS contamination. So that's, that's, that could be, uh, that could be something, um, that's causing that. Another thing is there're septic systems. Everybody's got a septic system out there. Septic systems can, can be contributors to PFAS impacts.
Oh, goodness.
Um, you know, what type of products, household products have PFAS in them, you know, there's, there could be some, some levels that are being contributed to through, you know, just normal use of a septic system on the side. Um, so there's a lot of different factors that, that, that need to be evaluated, but, a lot of it has to do with the bedrock geology. It's very difficult to identify, you know, uh, solid patterns in a bedrock formation due to the varying and the fractures that can be identified.
I understand, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Johnson's on the phone, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson, do you have any questions?
No, not this time.
Thank you.
I've got, I've got a quick question, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Um, a couple of questions, actually. Sean, we, I, I was trying to explain the radon systems and changing them out and how the town had to pick up the cost of some radon systems. Can you explain that better to the board, um, as to why we were required to pay for radon before we paid for the rest of the mitigation for the PFAS and the one-four?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, I can't do that, yes. So, um, some of these houses have very high, again, it's, uh, bedrock aquifer, that's what they're tapped into, there, some of these wells are very deep, and radon is naturally occurring in the bedrock. Um, and some of these houses have very high levels of radon in their water. Um, radon in water can mess up a treatment system, um, and it can be dangerous to actually have radon in your water and operate a tris, a treatment system. So we had to treat the radon, we had to install radon systems prior to installing the treatment, the PFAS and one-four dioxane treatment systems. And, uh, so that cost was an additional cost that, um, the town incurred as a result of high levels, just, just in the, in, you know, it's not a contaminant from the landfill or from Gentex, it's just naturally occurring radon in, in the wells at some of these houses.
Okay. Um, the, the other question I had was, well, I had a couple, but I don't want to abscond all the time. What's the current, the PFAS standard? I know that it's changed, of course, when we picked up the, when we got, when we got placed on an IRA, that standard has been reduced. Can you talk a little bit about the standard and how we measure that standard?
So, so the standard is still the same since 2021. It's still, we have a total PFAS six, which are six regulated PFAS compounds that the Mass D E P regulates. The total concentrations of those six that they regulate, the drinking water standard is twenty parts per trillion. The EPA is setting lower standards for, as an MCL for drinking water. Uh, those are going to go into the effect with the EPA this coming year. Following that, the Mass D E P is looking like they're going to be lowering their standards. We don't know exactly what the standard is going to be lower to, um, but there, we are looking at some, most likely some reductions in the standard coming forward from S D P.
So the measurable standard, to put it in layman's terms, what, what?
I don't know.
What kind of a concentrat, well, right now, what, what would the concentration look like? If you, if you, if you wanted to explain to a person, when, when somebody tests positive for PFAS, how much of that, how would you explain, like, how many swimming pools with one drop are of?
Well, so like one drop, I believe it's one drop high in, in Olympic-sized swimming pool is, is a part per trillion. I believe that, I, it's similar to that, so it's, it's, yeah, very small amounts can be, uh, can be an issue, so.
In the, in the fractures, Sean, in the land, you, you talked about maybe that wells that drawn, drawing water from different fractures in the bedrock. Are there any other outliers? Because there's a couple of, there are a couple of reds on that map that it didn't really make sense in terms of the trend, and I know that we can't look through the ground and see where the source is coming from. Are there any other sources of outliers that we could consider testing for or attributed to?
Uh, like I said, septic systems, you know, we could look back at some of these, the history of some of these lots, if there's ever been any dumping or anything like that that occurred in a lot, that could be something that could cause an outlier. Um, other than that, it's just, you know, taking a look at the house, the houses, what they use for products, what's, what they may, may be disposing of in the septic systems. You could, at, you know, at certain houses, perhaps at seventy-two House Eagle, you know, we could take a, a harder look at, um, how that well was constructed. Is that, to me, when I look at this groundwater concentration map and I see seventy-two Eagle, that's an outlier that specifically impacts the town. If we didn't have those concentrations at seventy-two Eagle, we, we might have a different situation right now for the town. So looking at that well construction, you know, are there, is there anything, you know, sometimes you can have a, it's possible to have a well that was constructed with some material that may have PFAS contaminants in it. So pulling, pulling the well materials, investigating the well is something we could always do as well, if we see a, a really high outlier, you know, so. You can, you can dig deep into, uh, well construction and well materials and do downhill geophysics and i- identify where the fractures are within that well, that five-hundred-foot well, and you can even do discrete sampling within the well, uh, at different intervals to, to, to identify what, you know, where that fracture might be that's causing the most impacts.
So, so Sean, thank, thank you very much for this. This was good. I, well, we've been all wondering, you know, we haven't had an update in a while, this is really good. The question I had was, you know, would you consider the town of Dudley in compliance with everything we've been asked to do?
Absolutely. Yep. We're in compliance, um, and I said, like I said, Gentex has been helping out a lot.
Yep.
You know, things have been worked out recently with them and, or are being worked out, I believe, or in the process of being worked out, so. It's been good, I think we, we have a good system now in place and, and things are going well. Yeah, I just want the residents to feel, you know, confident that we're doing what we can within the D E P orders and all that, you know, thanks, Chairman.
Mr. Langer?
Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a question, uh, listening to all the different tests that could be done and the areas you could look at, um, I'm assuming cost is associated with each one more and more, and then I'm thinking what standards or what procedures are you going to follow to dictate what is done at which time and what follows?
Yeah, so that's a good point. Um, as we move forward with this phase two assessment, it's really, the, the way I look at it, it should be done in a phased approach, right? So, you know, we, the way I, I, I see it is we're going to go out, we're going to do some initial well installations, some bedrock wells, to see where we're at and collect a couple of surface water samples, uh, and really, what we need to do is develop our lines of evidence as to what's the, what extent is the landfill actually impacting this neighborhood? Right now, we have a, a map, this, this is a great line of evidence right here. This tells us a lot of information, the seasonal sampling that we've been doing, this is, a lot of these houses is a year's worth of data. So that's a first line of evidence. Um, what we, the next line of evidence would be doing a, a few, a couple of bedrock wells to establish groundwater flow direction in the bedrock aquifer. And understanding more about what's going on down, immediately downgrading between the landfill and the residences. Um, and that's why I, I indicated in the, in the schedule that we do some of that phase two assessment in the, in the, in the fall and then more in the spring, because really have to take your steps and get the information and then proceed based on the data that you gather. So, um, want to take a phased approach and we have to get into the neighborhood where we're really trying to figure out what's going on in an individual health, uh, house than we get there, but I don't, I wouldn't want to get to that point until we've established a line of evidence that says we need to do that, or that makes the most sense.
And when do you see an end result, an end time?
So end result, I, I see for, for both the town and for Gentex is going to be getting public water supply into this neighborhood. Uh, like John, John was discussing, the standards are going to be lowered, you know, um, we may be looking at more Poet Systems if the standards go low enough.
Through the, through the chair, in terms of testing, when you, are we going to, at some point, we're going to be at the end result with the five-hundred-foot bubble, I would think, right?
Oh, yeah, five-hundred-foot, yeah, so we're getting pretty close to the, the waterline distribution system. It's, uh, another street away from, from the three that we're going to sample, I think it's Circle Drive. Is that Circle Drive, maybe? Uh, so, uh, that's when the public water supply comes in, that's the furthest we're going to be going. Um, and so we're, we're going to be done as far as expanding our bubble fairly soon. Um, and then, as I indicated previously, once we establish, uh, seasonal data for each resident, we then are able to reduce the sampling. So very soon, we're going to have a pretty solid idea of how many houses we have to treat and how many we don't. And it'll be a set number, we'll be done expanding our bubble, and, uh, there'll be a little more control at that time.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you. So Sean, it, it's pretty well built up in that area, but there are some areas that aren't built yet. Would, I'm going to put you on the spot, sorry. Even at the state level or the town level, if these folks develop near a PFAS area, high hit, or not even near, is it some kind of, would it be prudent, in your opinion, to be proactive? And maybe the state could regulate it, if they put a well in to install a system where they, they probably don't need it today, but who knows if they need it tomorrow, whether they're close or not, to be almost proactive instead of reactive? They would have the system installed, wouldn't affect, if it was never PFAS, it wouldn't affect the quality of water anyway, but the system would be installed and obviously you wouldn't have to swap out cartridges because you never, so.
You, you're talking about, had a lot that's not developed yet.
Right, but I mean, would, I mean, again, I'm putting you on the spot and I apologize. You can tell me it's outside your scope.
Yeah.
At a town level, would that be regulation we could look at?
Right, so I know some towns, I mean, uh, private wells are regulated by the Board of Health.
Right.
So I know some towns have put moratoriums on certain areas.
I mean, I know like.
Prohibiting, uh, private wells. I know that's, that's happened in the past.
I mean, I know I talked to the building inspector and I, if I recall correctly, he indicated to me, for example, new construction, it's not related, but I'm just going down the line, are required to put a charging port in for electric vehicles now, whether you have it or not.
Hmm.
Um, he also said, he, he thinks it's coming, where they're going to make people install roofs that can support solar, whether they have it or not, brackets installed, so I'm just extrapolating further, put something in to save the water, to prevent water.
Yeah.
Would they be, through the chair, would they be, new construction, it would be held to the standard, the PFAS standard?
Yes, yep.
So that wouldn't be a town cost, that would be the cost of the new construction, like the, it would be privately, I would think, installed to meet that standard to be signed off on a well?
Right, but could it be a town reg that we would?
Yeah, I mean, that could be something that's handled in the Board of Reg, Board of Health regulations, you know, requiring testing and then treatment as part of the construction.
One more, Mr. Chairman, I see Jeff cut his hand up, but I would just like to ask, the Water Commissioner Chairman's here, and I'm looking at the blue line coming down Eagle, makes a right turn into that small subdivision to the left, those are all going to be private wells on, on Bona?
I wasn't following that.
No, because, I'm, I'm not talking, this, this is directly to, to, if Scott, if Scott doesn't know, I don't, because I recall we had a development back when I was on the planning board that was adjacent to town water, and I know there was some kind of, you had to go to water at the time, that was water sewer, and either get an approval letter to tie into town water or denial from water if you were adjacent to a waterline due to capacity issues or, I'm just wondering why, and that's well, correct me if I'm wrong, southeast of where we're at now on your testing, Jeff? I mean, Sean?
Oh, yeah, so, so.
I just wonder why that little subdivision didn't tie in to town waters, pro, unless the water didn't give them permission or they came and they just said, you don't have to.
Which subdivision?
Bona Drive.
Oh, there are no houses down there?
Well, there's, there's definitely one on the corner.
You've got two and nineteen, and you got a blue, that, that blue line is the water lot, water main.
Right, but why wouldn't it go down Bona as opposed to private?
Does.
So, yeah, uh, so just one thing to point out is we do, in that direction, we have delineation in the neighborhood.
Right, I see the red line, but I'm just talking just in general, I remember there was some, there used to be a reg, Scott, if I recall correctly, where if you were adjacent to town water, you folks.
Yeah, you had to tie in, yes.
The developer had to come to ask to tie in or ask not to tie in, you guys either gave permission to tie in because you, through control of water.
Right.
I'm just wondering why the town water would be right there and we wouldn't pick up those, I can't, there's like.
That number two?
Well, two, nineteen, there's three other lots on that right side.
Nineteen, seven, that's Eagle Drive going down to New Boston Road, that's all on the water main.
Nineteen's Eagle Drive.
I'm assuming that's all public water.
Okay, but what about inside Bona itself, it's right adjacent to the water main, I just, I don't understand why.
I don't, I can't answer that on two, two, two Bona Drive, I don't know.
Two, four, and like, there's another one across the street.
There's like three houses up there, huh?
Okay, yeah, okay, they just shows empty lots on this map.
Right, that's what I'm saying, they are empty, but I just, I don't know why, right there, that.
When they, when the, whoever built that road, Bona Drive, didn't put a main down there? I don't know. I, I, I don't know what, I wouldn't, don't know that.
I just don't know if they approached the board or if it were, you know, the boys had to tie in.
And, and just for, for information purposes, I attended a, um, online seminar, webinar with EPA three weeks ago, and the, I believe their levels are going to be down around two, two parts per trillion. And then others will be, they have some kind of a convol- And then others will be, they have some kind of a convoluted way of calculating a PFAS number that will be put into a chart and say whether or not it's too high or not. It's a really convoluted system that's still in the public, public comment phase, but that's, it's coming. I, I have the, all the information for, for that if folks want to view it.
That'd be great if you could. Jeff, you had something?
I, I just wanted to mention, there was recently a article in the Worcester paper, about a week or two ago, that there, there are talks of the DEP implementing a requirement that installation of new wells would be required to be tested for PFAS. So, and then also, just while I'm here, too, not to, not to backtrack, but a little bit about how we wound up here, and there's two different systems that we're working on to hear, the solid waste with the landfill and the waysite cleanup division. So, if Sean could just go a little bit deeper into that, just to explain to people how we, we got here. And we, we had asked initially through the, the testing process for, with the town's landfill, the required testing, to do some of these, take some of these measures to determine the source, and the town was required to do the RTN and follow in the waysite, waysite cleanup with the 21E division of the DEP's system and do all the testing on the private wells prior to installing bedrock wells to get closer to determining the actual source. And it, it still hasn't been proven to be directly from the, the town's landfill. And as well as the PFAS being sourced from the, from the onsite septic systems at each of the homes, the 1-4 dioxide as well could be from degreasers or household cleaners or anything like that, too. So, you know, oftentimes, and I think, as we've been determined through like forensic study, a lot of times that that is just the case, that it's actually the reason why there's an anomaly like, like you're seeing with the map up there, right?
Yes, that's correct. So, that's another, another avenue that we can go through is there's, there's a whole bunch of PFAS compounds that are listed and you can do, we, we've, we've already done some of this. Where you actually can plot the different, and use forensics to actually plot the different structures of, of what you're seeing, so that you can determine, you know, all kinds of this, could be a sort, different source areas here or there. The, the forensics analysis that we've done to date is, hasn't been all that conclusive, so it's kind of something we've done in the, on our desktop, so we haven't gone public with it yet, but that is something you can do, is you can look at individual houses and look for, look at the different, you know, different PFAS comp, the list, and see which, which compounds, you know, sometimes there's some, some compounds that are not even regulated with the DEP that are very high, that are, could be an indicator of a certain product they may, may be using at the house, or a product that may have been used at Gentex or even another industrial facility that would be upstream, you know? So, that type of forensics is definitely something, again, another line of evidence that you build when you're trying to identify the sources for different wells impacts. So, yeah, and Jeff, as Jeff indicated, we, we do seasonal monitoring at the landfill, and we've been doing it for two plus years now. We've seen, we have higher concentrations at the landfill than we're seeing, than we're seeing in general in the neighborhood. Some decent concentrations, some high levels. The levels in the neighborhood are more consistent with what you're seeing at Gentex rather than what's at the landfill. Landfill is much higher. But they've been fairly consistent, we're not seeing any increases at the landfill. It's, in general, it's been fairly steady, the, the levels that we're seeing, both for 1-4 dioxide and, and PFAS. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you very much for coming, appreciate the information.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, just, as a public reminder, we had an article on the, passed it, the previous town meeting, two town meetings ago, to address this entire project, installation of Poet system, ongoing testing and that sort of thing. So, the decision point for the town, after we find out, we do more forensics, the decision point is when we've reached the end result in terms of how far out with that 500-foot bubble we need to go, when that ends, we need to take a look at what the cost would be to install a water line versus maintaining the Poet systems, which are doing the trick. I think Sean would agree that, but the town will be on the hook, hook for that forever, but the cost of a water line is also, if it's born entirely by the town, could be pretty expensive. So, that's going to be the decision point that we're all going to be looking at in the, in the months and a year to come.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, new business, town meeting warrant open September 25th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. We're past that, which is good, and we're going to close it on Thursday, September 28th, 2023, at 1:00 PM and vote to approve.
So, move.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
We need a roll call vote, Mr. Chairman.
We need a roll call vote.
Do you want it, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Should we read the suggested motions for these?
Yes, if you could.
Move that the board opens the warrant effective immediately and close the warrant on September 28th at 1:00 PM.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
John Marcy, aye.
Mark Landry, aye.
Carrie Sigunovich, aye, unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson?
Jay Johnson, aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen approve the posting of the October 16th special town meeting warrant on September 28th, 2023. Further, the Board of Selectmen approve Articles 1 through 10 as printed in the warrant, including the total adjusted fiscal year 24 budget of $26,707,255.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Aye. Stephen Sullivan, aye.
John Marcy, aye.
Mark Landry, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
Carrie Sigunovich, aye, unanimous. Sorry about that, Mr. Johnson, forgot you, you were here. Next on the agenda, Dudley PTO, Heather Bowes requests to use the beach for Thursday, November 23rd, 2023, for the annual Turkey Trot 5K.
Aye, just for permission, again, to use the beach on Thanksgiving Day, start at 8:00 AM, we're wrapped up by 10:00 at the latest.
How long has this been going on for?
This is the 10th year.
10 for 10.
Board's pleasure.
Just double check with public safety that they...
Oh.
I'll be fine, I think we settled some barricades in the morning, also.
Mr. Chair, Heather, you guys talk to Fire and EMS, don't they, they usually, they don't send anybody usually, right, but we usually just double check with them?
They usually have somebody down there with a bag.
Okay, have you talked to them yet?
I haven't, but I'll reach out to them and make sure.
Not on me, I assume, apologize. Any further questions? No? Mr. Marson?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Dudley PTO's request to use the beach for Thursday, November 23rd, 2023, the annual Turkey Trot 5K.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
We need a roll call for this? Oh, because, I apologize, roll call vote.
John Marcy, aye.
Mark Landry, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
Carrie Sigunovich, aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
We'll get there.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, old business, there is nothing.
Just a quick question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan?
Came up at the last meeting and Michelle, our administrative assistant, kind of confirmed it. Have we strained out the audio? No reflection on, no reflection on the operator, but I have, we have people contacting our office saying that they, they can't hear the regular meeting, but when it goes on YouTube, it's fine. I know it's not you, Amanda.
It's fine.
So, are we waiting on them to come fix it for us, or do we still have an issue? I haven't, I just, I just want to make sure that, like I said, we got an email telling us that people had contacted Michelle a couple of weeks back about audio issues. I just want to, if we haven't, if it hasn't been fixed, I want to make sure that it's still on the front run to get fixed.
I think you just fired it.
Okay.
I was going to say, that, there is something that's out of my control because everything here works, and it works against you, so once it is here is where...
Right. I just want to be clear, Amanda, I know it's not you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We'll keep my people updated.
Next on the agenda, departmental communication, Mr. Carmen Yanni, do you have anything?
Good evening. Do the easy lift first. Like to thank the board. September 23rd, last Saturday, Knights of Columbus were supposed to have a toll booth. The rain date is coming up this Saturday, so in advance, thank you, appreciate it. Hopefully, we'll, it'll be a clearer day. We could use a clear weekend, nice and sunny. Onto the treasurer collector's side. Appreciate everybody's patience, Tuesdays and Thursdays. As we go through the budget process, we know that there's a light at the end of the tunnel, so everybody who's come in to make sure things are paid, it is a good thing. Also, the department heads who've received other people's mail, everybody in this building deserves a pat on the back. Everybody's mail has been reasonably time, timely, nothing sits on a desk for a week or so. In advance of the anticipated tax rate, right now, we don't know what the February 1st and the May 1st amounts are going to be, so if you are at home and you'd like to get that payment in, trust me, as soon as the Board of Selectmen host the assessors to set the tax rate, and we know what it is, and you're making your plans to travel, please, I will be happy to make sure that you get that information to get the deduction for the end of the year. Beyond that, appreciate everybody's patience and time going through the budget process. I know there's a lot of ups and downs, and there were some questions at the FAA meeting, and again, I'll extend it, if there's a question from an individual board member, town administrator, anyone, I'm available for that next layer, that deep dive, in the event there is a question on, Mr. Marcy has a question on the retirement system and how it's going to look for next year. Happy to go through and provide whatever we need to for source documents. Also, between Jonathan and Michelle, I'm sure the phone rings at least once a week and somebody has a question, if they need some information to make an informed choice at the upcoming town meeting, again, whatever I can do to put better information out, happy to do it, and we'll try to get it out in a better, more digestible system. There was a question on the excise taxes, how many, how much came in, why this year was an outlier, you know, if we could get a, a single page ahead of time so people can digest it as opposed to head down and try to make a decision almost on the fly. Beyond that, thank you very much. Again, if there's questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Chief, do you have anything?
Yeah, just real quick, last Friday, we had half a day at Shepherd Hill. Sergeant Dean Popowski and Officer Philip Megas conducted an Alice training. As you know, Alice training, from past experience and talking to you guys, is a training that prepares staff members just in case there was a critical incident at the school or an active shooter. Officers worked very closely with administration to make sure that everybody's trained and up to date, and they're going to be doing more trainings within the school system the next couple of months. That's it.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Jeff, do you have anything?
So, just briefly, the, we've received over the last week, week and a half, about a thou, a little over 1,000 tons of road salt in preparation for this year's winter season. We actually realized the decrease in the cost of road salt, which is a good thing. And also, we've, after lifting the hiring freeze, we've posted ads internally and externally simultaneously for new, new employees for the highway department, so with a fairly good response and, you know, obviously, open those up to any internal candidates, given, would be given prefer, preference, but we, we actually had a pretty good response to the, to the postings, too, so I anticipate being able to restore the highway department back to some, some level of preparedness for the winter season, so. About it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
You have water sewer, you have anything?
Yeah, just to keep everybody informed on what's going on with the water main work, tomorrow morning, you know, it shouldn't be as wet as it has been all weekend. Tomorrow morning, they're slated to tie First Ave to Brandon, so they're going to have to shut the water off in that area for about four hours or less. The, and then in the next couple of weeks, we should see the, some overnight work on West Main Street between Prospect Street and the driveway to the water sewer, the Water Station 1, the gazebo. That'll be done during overnight hours, that's, you know, considering that the state lets us do it. And the rest of it is ongoing, and we're looking mid-October, we're still on schedule to start turning on the water treatment plant down on New Boston Road. So, they're, they're getting ready to start turning that on and testing it out and hopefully getting it online very soon. There's a lot of movement.
Thank you, Scott, appreciate it. Next on the agenda, board members' comments. Mr. Johnson, do you have anything?
No, but thank you for allowing me to listen in and participate through the phones.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I probably should ask Jeff or Scott when they're up. A lot of people asking about the trenching on West Main, especially where it's kind of in front of the post office, it's settled, is that, Jeff, is that, was that the water project, was that you?
No, that's gas.
So, is that, are they done, are they coming back to fix that, or can we make them come back and fix it?
They're supposed to maintain the trenches as the, as the Senate settlement, so I've, I actually put in a call to National Grid as well as Mass, MassDOT, trying to know what the intention is before the winter season.
Yeah, because that's going to be a mess.
We're not responsible for, you know, I know a lot of people are...
It's a state road.
Yeah. So, that permit went through the state, didn't even go through us, right? That permit went through the state?
It's through Mass Highway, yeah. Any utility owner is the, is actually the, the outcome of the responsible party for the, so National Grid would be responsible for any of the work that happens on Route 12, I mean, in what, Route 197 on West Main Street. And likewise, the water department would be responsible for anything that happens and for any of the logging that happens.
All right, so once again, it's just an issue of people think we're, we're responsible because it's in our town, but we have zero control over it, except you can call and ask and say, "Hey, there's a problem. We can't put their feet to the fire." Make them, it's not a developer, we can do a contractor, so, all right, I want to get that out there. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Landry?
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Mr. Healy for the great job he did educating us. Thank all the departments for doing a great job moving forward to what we can call normal operations. Wish everybody a happy fall and watch out for school buses and students, please, everywhere.
Yeah.
And the roads are wet, and I, I drive every day and I just see people speeding and just be careful, be aware. and just be careful, be aware.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Marcy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also would like to thank Sean for coming and giving such an important update. You know, a lot of people up in that neighborhood want to know, I hope they found this useful. I know they're in contact, but for the rest of the town, want everybody to know that we're, we're on it. Also, thanks to everybody for the budgeting process. Like I said last time, we will get through this and get through this in the right way and October 16th, we'll sign up on our final budget for the year. So, thanks to everybody who just bated in on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marcy. I don't have anything. Next on the agenda, adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Second. Motion in a second, roll call vote.
John Marcy, aye.
Mark Landry, aye.
Steven Sullivan, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
Carrie Sigunovich, aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.